Join me in giving our thoughts and our prayers to what's happening in Ukraine at the minute. It's absolutely awful. I did put out a statement in collaboration with Gareth and we have purchased a flag which is now flying on the Centenary Square. I was a bit disappointed because I didn't get to hear about the vigil until after it had happened. Yeah, which was a shame because I would have, I would have loved to have been there. Great to be out and about chatting to people in the sunshine as well. It's been quite warm the couple of days this week. So it's, it's nice being out and chatting to people around town. Looking forward to seeing Little Shop of Horrors next week, isn't it? If you haven't got your tickets yet, I'm sure councillor Haddie would encourage you to purchase them. A great showing prospect. And that's about it really, yeah. As I say, good to be out and about, meeting people and also meeting councillor colleagues from elsewhere. Now, before we, before we move on, I know Gareth and I don't, don't agree with, agree over this, but I thought I'd, I'd seek the views of councillors. I would, I would like to propose that the business continuity agenda item, we push to the end of the meeting and that we have it as a section B item. Because I believe that part of the discussion of the document might stray into roles responsibilities and conversations about the sort of the job, the job descriptions and remuneration and things. So I'm proposing that and I don't know if anybody would like to second me on that, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's councillor Greenley has just seconded that.
Yes, I'll second it. I'm sorry my camera is not on.
Go on Gareth.
The agenda's already gone out and it's not a part of the item. It's already in the public domain and it doesn't refer, the report doesn't refer.
The, the, the report might not Gareth, but what my fear is, is that is the, that quite happy for the reports to be in the public domain. My fear is that the conversation and discussion that we need to have as councillors will stray into territory which would need to be in part B.
Well, I don't think it should stray. I think it should be confined to what the report says.
Well, I've made a proposal to councillors Gareth and I'm guessing it would be a councillors decision to whether this.
I'm advising you that, you know, as the park, that the decision on the agenda is ultimately the part I have decided to put it out. And there is nothing there that would qualify it to be a confidential item. Because it's not mentioning any names, we're not mentioning any salaries, we're not mentioning any job descriptions. It's purely a protocol as to what happens when an incident occurs.
So I believe, I mean, so we don't want to debate it now really. Is there any, any, I, I've made it, I've made a proposal. It goes, it does go against the advice of the clerk, but we are the decision makers. It's been seconded by councillor Greenley, yeah? Amongst the company that are here, is anybody in agreement with the proposal?
I'll go with it.
Thank you, anybody else? Councillor Keddie, anybody else? Councillor Haddie, is your hand up?
My hand is up, but I think there's two elements to this. We, the clerk is right in the sense that the generality, but you're correct as well and that we were undoubtedly stray into areas of confidential matters.
Yeah.
And at that point, this proposal would kick in.
Yeah. I mean, so what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to avoid.
Start then, no.
Yeah, what I'm trying to avoid happening is in the middle of the discussion, stopping the meeting and turning it into a part B item. Yeah, I don't know what colleagues are going to say, but I know based upon the debates we've had about this before, because this is the third or fourth occasion, it's, it, it, it's been discussed or, or, or mentioned that. Now, I don't, I don't want to stop the meeting because we strayed into an area that we shouldn't have done. So and I think the best way for us to deal with that is for it to have us a part, part of the item. And I believe now that given the votes, the, the voting that's taken place, that, that we, we've agreed to do that. Any councillors disagree with that? No, okay Gareth, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Okay, so we will place the business continuity plan as the final item on the agenda and it will be, we'll stop recording. And only councillors will be able to join us at that meeting. Gareth, can you advise me as to where Harvey would sit on that, yeah? He's not a councillor, so he's definitely.
Harvey has the right to stay as I already.
Okay, that's fine.
He's a full voting member, yeah.
That's fine, okay, good. Right, statements from the public.
We have got some members of the public, so if they want to, they can comment if they can show their hand. Or, you know, make themselves known in the area of matter.
No, okay, thank you. Apologies for absence.
Councillor Lovelock, it's unfortunate that the home of the children is ill. So that's other priorities.
I don't know if you need to know about councillor Thames, you can't make it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
He doesn't have to apologise, he's not a member of the.
No, I just, no, just don't mention it.
Declarations of interest. I'd like, it's not a pecuniary interest, but as the now chair of Penguin Community Association, I guess I need to declare an interest because the new build is one of the things we're going to consider in planning. Minutes of the last meeting. Anybody like to approve the minutes of the last meeting? Councillor Haddie, councillor Lube, anybody object? Alright, everybody's in favour, thank you very much. To receive minutes of the asset management committee. Anybody like to propose those as a to record? Councillor Keddie, thank you, seconded by councillor Mile. Anybody got an objection? Thank you. Financial reports, Gareth, over to you.
Yeah, first one chairman is the pay award. It's taken 12 months to be finalised, which it finally has been reported South Exmanity really. It's both members of staff are on the National Joint Council for Services NGC model contract and therefore have been remunerated in accordance with the base pay. It illustrates the pay scales that the two relevant members of staff are on. The award has been literally last week approved by the unions on the national association of local councils. They've asked for it to be implemented swiftly because obviously if it happens next month, then people will be facing larger NI contributions. So that's why they ask it. So the recommendation is that you just accept that pay award is, is awarded in accordance with the.
I propose that.
Yeah, prepares my councillor Mile, anyone like to second it please? Councillor Palmer, thank you, any objections? Thank you very much, thank you Gareth.
Financial statements and I'm sure if you want me to share these. Sorry, authorised payments.
Authorised payment, yeah.
I'll have to share these if I can find them. I think they're there now. As you can see, quite considerable amount to get towards the end of the financial year. A few additions since it went out just here, £1,800, which is the contribution we're making from our donations budget to get the recreation grounds registered properly with the land registration. Our land registry, so it's the land registration with the land registry. Good energy, the meter's got red, so they've updated some of the bills. So there's a slight change in the electricity Centenary Square, but that's a couple of months again. It's not one month, the rest are elsewhere as shown. Roof repairs are coming in slightly better than we thought. There's still outstanding work to be done, but I can't imagine it being taking the full £22,000, which is the original price, so that's good news. And then we've got some bills from Mr Roberts, seat repairs and some January to come new addition. Apart from that chairman, it's, it's out of the circuit to give the agenda.
Yeah, can I, can I point out the item, old town council civic event? There's a little bit of confusion between the clerk and myself. I, I haven't had any mayor's allowance or taken any money out of the council since my tenure and kind of felt it a little inappropriate for me to be taking money out at this stage in the council for my wife and I to go and have a meal together. So I paid that, I paid that Gareth paid it as well. So I, I've done it today actually. I've paid that £70 back into the council account, yeah? So. Yeah, just, yeah, it's, it seemed inappropriate given the fact that all we've talked about in two years is how little money we've got, yeah? Can I, can I just ask about the roof Gareth, for some, I think it was Bob said there was another leak? In another part of the roof at the back, is that right?
Well, they've been up into the roof, they can't physically see any, any leak above the stage. As I said, they haven't finished and we have asked them to look at other loose slates before they could help finally. But now I think there's some work to be done with the cherry pick on one or two. And there is still scaffolding round the back to access certain parts. So as I said, there's still a bit of work, it's not the fact, this is just the first payment. There will be other payments to finish the work off, so this is up to really getting the main tower and the repairs on the area where the scaffolding was on the front. So they haven't left the site, there are other works to be done. We have urged them to look at all possible loose slates before they leave, so I'm going to see whether it's better.
That's great, thank you. Financial statements.
All right, just before you move off this one, can you just remind me what the GSP legal land registration was? I, I missed that bit when you said it. What land was, were we registering?
This is the money we agreed to donate to the recreation ground trustees to allow them to get the land.
Oh yes, okay.
Bankly registered.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine.
So it's a fixed, fixed cost price.
Okay, thank you.
Budget wise, as you can see, we're coming obviously up from the payments tonight which will make some difference. But mainly they're on target, the top there fees and charges. That doesn't represent, but it does represent the truth because that money's gone out. But other money, a lot of that was the money for the plan that we're discussing tonight. And on the grant side, we had a grant to cover those costs from the lottery. So we've had to place it there to show it's gone out. Cloud services have proved expensive. Some of those possibly should have been recorded to Chester for the work on the registering the Chester website. So it's just swings and roundabouts really, but generally as you can see insurance has come below domestic rates and we said we have a non-domestic rate, we had a discount there accredited to this year. So on balance, as you can see, we're doing up to about in that cost centre. Asset management, we will see the 20,000 projects will be gone by tomorrow. That will go towards the cost of roof repair. And then there are other elements there that will then get to cover those costs that we reported previously. Community grants, as I said, the donations, again, that money for tonight would look like that. And there are certain aspects associated with, as I said, the grants, if you're the community grants, we refuse to pay things like the Christmas month. There was no take up this year if you recall. Cost of democracy hasn't, as I said, there's been very little civic costs and civic events. Because of the type of year it's been, very little member training. Electricity and gas are doing quite well on, on target really. Good news on gas, we've also got a rebate of 3,000 something for on British Gas who overcharged us over the last account based on estimated bills. That should come in as an income stream. Seems to be, and the income is the one obviously well, you know, our budget tip is £183,000, nearly £184,000. And we're under that and a lot of that is down to the loss of income on the hire of the town hall. Although I do have money to go in about £2,000 from the fridge and a small amount to come in as well. Office costs again, slightly below, but probably have to use some of those as I say to pick up, transfer, to cover the roof expenses. Staff costs and pension is the one where possibly we under budgeted in previous years. So it's something we might have to address and be the next option to do. And obviously we have budgets for the pay rise which hasn't come through yet, so salaries under budgeted. That will adjust next year. So generally, we've come out, you know, fairly healthy as you can see. But largely don't go up the mess, as I said, it would be improved in how we've been spending the money.
Sorry to interrupt you Gareth, councillor Greenley has apparently been furiously waving at me, I've not noticed because.
Yeah, I've, I've had a message from councillor Davis, he's trying to get in and he can't get in. And my camera doesn't seem to be working.
Right, okay, thank you.
And I'll have to see. I mean, if somebody could tell councillor Davis to use the link that I sent out to remind the link earlier. That's all I can suggest.
Okay, thank you.
See what I'm doing now. Right, if everybody's happy with that unless there's any questions.
Yeah, any questions?
Councillor Palmer had his hand raised.
Councillor Palmer.
My apologies, I had trouble getting in, to be honest, that's why I was late getting in. And I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you Gareth, I don't know whether it's my computer or, or what it is. So if I, if I wave around again, it's because I've got a, I haven't managed to hear you, sorry.
I'm having a similar problem.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, can you stop sharing your screen Gareth now? Because, because we've got like pictures of ourselves, yeah?
I don't really know how to do that now because I've had to go back into chat. But I need to share the, the next one, I don't know, you just stopped. The reconciliation and this is really. Councillor Mile now to confirm that this is accurate under the new procedure. Still present.
I'm still present. What do you want me to do?
Well, I emailed you if you recall the last meeting. It was decided that the that position adaptive mayor would do bank reconciliation, so I did.
I didn't get, I've not had that email I don't think, but I'm happy to. It looks alright to me.
Reconciled, so you know, if you can just.
Yeah, it looks alright to me Gareth, thank you.
Thank you.
Sharing for now then.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I just realised it's, it's, we've don't know whether Melvin wants to say anything, I've missed out statements from county councillors. Anything you want to say Melvin?
You moved to it though, that's the mile.
Yeah, you're turned off Mel.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, may as well sort of mention the bridge, quite a big topic. Obviously there was an incident last week where the lamppost was loosened and the parapet was, was also loosened. That's been fixed. And then obviously this morning there was that incident on the bridge where the bin wagon coming out of D lane caught the railings and dragged the railings across the street. It's a shame really that it, it's a shame it happened at all, but incredible that it happened coming out of D lane. Anyway, they managed to get in there, but couldn't do it on the way out. So it's been sort of bodged together and Kadu will be looking at it. And if they're not happy with it, some new stone will have to be put in. And if that's the case, when the road is closed overnight, they'll do it, they'll do it then. So that's that on the bridge and also it's technically not gangotin, but it's the horseshoe pass. And before the end of the month, it is projected that the speed limit will be starting to be worked on. So should be done in time for Easter. That's me Dan, thank you.
Thank you, just, just, just a bit of clarification of what you've just said. That the, the, when the tarmac, the road bit of, of, of the refurbishment of Castle Street, that's going to happen at night, which is what Mel was making reference to. They're going to do it at night because they're going to have to close the road to do it.
Yeah, sorry, I thought, sorry, apologies.
Okay, thank you. Town clerks reports.
Yes chairman, first one is just to provide an update really and to endorse the actions we undertook on, in response to Ukrainian conflict. I mean, obviously as the mayor said earlier in his introduction, it's a very sad situation faces a lot of people and I'm sure they're all very conscious of the suffering that's has happened and continues to happen day by day. Obviously, you know, we did purchase the flag, so we got to, that was in, in the authorised payments. So that's covered now that that was an extra expense. And as I, as the mayor had said, there was a proposal by a community group for a vigil. And they contacted the town council for that permission. And so appropriate permissions were given and they were asked to obviously comply with the term of condition as higher. And I think it passed and that can be smoothly and it was quite a successful vigil. It was nice for them to contact the town council instead of just, you know, holding something on the square. We've a statement out, I think it says as a small town council, it's very difficult really to make any inroads on the international stage on issues like this. But in the mayor's statement, we endorsed a position regarding support that was being let out by the Derbyshire County Council. And made reference to some more local initiatives which I cannot see, which are on Facebook. So really it's just the recommendation is just to endorse the action, take the date included expenditure incurred. And that to consider if there's any further actions that members would like to see the town council undertake or if people are happy that we've, we've had the adequate response we can do in the circumstances.
Anybody got any comments or anything, but let's say anything? Right, councillor Keddie.
I am just a bit confused because I thought we had to do something with the flag. I thought we had to have another council meeting, but it appears that we didn't in the end. What happened there?
Well, there are protocols with flag flying, as with everything. But I think circumstances overtook that. Other, like the national government obviously ignored the protocols and started flying flags on buildings and a lot of others did. There was confusion about it being half mast, you couldn't put it at half mast. And technically, I hate to say, flying a flag of, of, of another country would be, would require planning permission. But obviously others have done it and I think it would be rather mean if we were forced to get planning permission. So as I say, it's not a simple matter, but you know, the mayor and myself took a decision. It took a while to get a flag because the emergency demand was quite considerable overnight. Thankfully, we saved Atlantis one in the interim while I was being delivered. And we swapped them back yesterday, so we saved up now their Ukrainian flag back and we've got those now there flying. So it was just a matter of, as I say, needs must as it were, I suppose. And I said technically there are issues that need to be addressed or protocols that should be in place for flying flags for foreign nations. But I think it's just a push to one side with the minimum.
Councillor Haddie, you had your hand up.
Yes, I, I, we didn't have much of a expenditure on this and it generated a lot of positive vibes, I'm sure. I'm sure that was almost a petty cash matter. But the principles of flying flags is correct and that you can fly a union flag or your before we left the European Union, you could fly a union, a U flag without requiring planning permission, but anything else you do. But in the outpouring of disgrace for the behaviour that the Russian Federation seemed to have entered into, the prospects of any sort of action against the town council for doing so would be very unlikely. Plus, I don't think it was us that actually hoisted it, was it? It was done at the time of the vigil.
No, I just.
It was, it was a decision made following a discussion between Gareth and myself.
Okay, well, we'll come and visit you in prison at the time.
Yeah.
My next question and more substantive one is, did we, did you say how long the flag would fly for? Or did it fly for the immediate future?
For the immediate future I would guess, if as long as there's a conflict going on, yeah? Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that councillors would agree with that.
That's, that's my, that's my next, that's my next point, that we, we would fly it until such times as the Russian Federation and withdrew from Ukraine.
Yeah. Yeah, is that, so the recommendation is that we endorse the actions taken to date, including the expenditure incurred and that we consider further actions that could be undertaken. So if you, if you do feel that there's anything further that we could do or need to do, if you contact Gareth, yeah? I'm sure at this time we can agree to agree with whatever it is that anybody feels it's necessary for us to do. So that's the proposal, if anybody like to propose it, councillor Keddie, seconded by councillor Haddie. Anybody object? Thank you. The people's plan, can I, before we do this, just in case I don't get an opportunity at the end, just thank the group that have put this together through what have been very difficult times in terms of consultation with lockdown being in the middle and stuff. And I'm guessing as a result of that, it's been a little bit delayed, but thank you very much on behalf of us all for the hard work of the Tuscan Vines group that have put this together, thank you. All right, over to you Gareth, or is it Phil, yeah?
No, it's, it's just myself, it's very, obviously it's now come as the final action plan as it were. Well, plan whichever you want to call it, to be endorsed by the council. Since we last met, when we went through those areas of responsibility to identify as being relevant.
to identify as being relevant to town council, uh, the plan has gone out, as you know, to further consultation over Christmas period. I think you remember I reported the unfortunate situation with Royal Mail failing or losing, uh, the information that's sent to them. So on the basis of that, the chair of the group continued the consultation period into February. I'm aware that they've met and they have, they have gone through all consultations that have come in, there's some 20 plus consultations, um, and have made some adjustments to the plan, primarily the one being, um, the, the, um, addition of a goal that reflects our council's aspirations regarding climate emergency. So it almost becomes a crosscutting theme in the plan. And then there are individual alterations made in response to some comments made by the individuals. And then my understanding is that after this meeting, should you endorse the plan, then, um, those comments will be relayed back to the individuals so they can see where they've been added or not in the plan. Um, some were quite prevalent, some on the Welsh land, obviously have been added, which was an omission. And then others were rather specific, I understand, to, uh, locations and therefore, you know, have been, will be responded to, but had no material effect on the plan. Um, so the proposition is, or the recommendation is that obviously, as you've only thanked the core team for their work in preparing the base plan, because it has been a considerable amount of work on into it. And, you know, there's been a core team that have been, I remember saying to them, it's a marathon, not a sprint. And there's about six people that can finish the marathon. Those that sprinted off have disappeared. Uh, so, you know, it is a considerable body of work, not just the action plan, but if you remember the vision document behind it. And if members are happy, we adopt the revised action plan. And then this goes forward to form, what we'd have to do is pick out the bones and go into our business plan for the next five years for the new council.
Uh, councillor Keddie?
I'd just like to reiterate what you said, chairman. Thank you very much. And I can appreciate all the hard work that's gone in there. When they were doing the, the little showcase at the town hall, I called in, and it's marvellous the work they were doing there. Although Phil couldn't use the computer that easily. But no, fantastic work everybody involved.
Yeah, councillor Palmer?
Yes, I would agree with that. Uh, but I'd like to make an amendment, uh, if, uh, propose an amendment, if I may, uh, on, on 2.5. Um, and I, I propose that we, that it would be changed to the town council will consider which elements will feed into the town council's business plan. Uh, the reason for this is that, um, I, I believe the, the new town council, um, really needs to, um, consider the elements as opposed to, um, approve the elements rather than just approve the elements that will feed into the town council. So it's turning it around a little bit.
Did, yeah. Um, so we have, can you repeat?
Yes.
The proposal?
The town council will consider which elements will feed into the town council business plan. Planning process, the new council to consider after the elections in May 2022.
Okay. So, uh, any, anybody like to comment upon that? Councillor Haddie?
The original concept of this, um, people's plan was that the, um, not the town council, but the people of the town would put their views forward for the LDP submission. Um, I'm unhappy with that, um, suggestion that the clerk just made, that, that this places an acceptance of this, um, which I fully accept is a good, um, people's plan. It's fully, um, consulted and all the rest of it and a good body of work. But I don't think the brief was to constrain the council on, and not, and not us, but the, the council, which will come past in May, as to what it does in the future. So this is a recommendation for the LDP, not necessarily what, uh, it may or may not be, um, what the, the council would wish as a business plan. But councillor Palmer is correct and it would be, um, incorrect to bind an incoming council to, to something that I personally wouldn't agree to. And, and councillor Palmer's suggestion would, um, would modify. So I would accept, I would...
There is no proposal to bind the council. The recommendation is to adopt the revised action.
No, it's just what you just said, though. It would go forward as the business plan.
And obviously, the next council I would suggest would be foolish not to consider what the people want for their community.
Oh, sure.
Oh, yes, sure.
And therefore should reflect a great number of those aspirations in the business plan. I'm not saying everything will be in there, but that's, that's, well, you know, that's the, it's, it's not a proposition, it's not a proposition to say adopt the plan and it forms the business plan. But it says, elements of the action plan will feed into the town council's business plan. And that will be for, you know, that process of planning, won't it? There'll be certain elements which have been achieved, others would not be able to achieve in the timescale because of funding. But that's another debate for the future council. You are not tying them into it, but, you know, it's a body of work which is based on aspirations of the community, which I think a town council should wish, wish to support and reflect if they can going forward, subject to budgets and, and timescales, obviously. So I think that's, you know, the, the proposition isn't for it to be our business plan. It's, it's just to adopt the plan as it is. And then from then on in, it will be used to inform, as I say, elements to feed into the town council's business plan.
When we, when we adopt it, it gets, it gets put forward as part of our contribution to the LDP, that's my understanding.
Well, we've already made a contribution, but obviously, as you know, that's been stalled. So there'll be another round of the LDP. So we'll have to look at the revised consultation again on the LDP. But we have got a document behind us which suggests thinking.
Yeah. Councillor Palmer?
There, there's no suggestion that this shouldn't, shouldn't be a very useful, um, document, uh, when it comes to, um, moving the council's business forward. I just think that my, uh, my amendment would clarify this so that the, um, it, it's not saying that we're not, or the new council is not, uh, going to, uh, use this document to, to move forward. It was just that the town council will decide the elements that will feed into the town council's business plan, rather than the other way around.
So councillor Palmer, councillor Palmer, just for clarification, so the, what, what you're actually talking about 2.5 is part of the report, yeah?
Yes.
So in order to, in order to, um, the, the recommendations that we're about to vote on aren't part of the report, the, the recommendations at the bottom. So is it that you would like to change, uh, one of the recommendations to encompass what you've just said?
That, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
So it would be seen that once adopted, uh, elements of the action plan will be considered by the town council in its future business planning processes.
Yes, that's, that's, that's what, that's what the amendment is kind of saying, yes? So anybody like to second that amendment? Melvin, thank you. Anybody against that amendment? Okay. So let's now go to the substantive recommendations. So we've got a recommendation and, and we wholeheartedly thank the Sheikh Michael and Gathlin Court team for their work in preparing this document. And, uh, secondly, B, we are, um, B is, is the amended statement, yeah? Uh, anybody, councillor Haddie, you propose?
I was about to say, uh, I, I'd be very happy to propose that we accept the, uh, Kerry Cangotten as, uh, with that amendment. That's an excellent way forward.
Okay. Any, anybody disagree with that? Okay, thank you very much. And again, once again, thank you so much to the, uh, team that have put this together. Brilliant. Right, so the next item we're, uh, we're, we're having at the end of the meeting. So let's look at planning, please. Councillor Keddie?
One second, I'm just going to pick the papers of paper above my printer.
Yeah.
Okay, there are only three this, this month?
0104.
Yeah, 0104. Uh, that's a flat roof extension up at, uh, Golugver Castel on Willow Street. That's where the new junction, right opposite the new junction, where the new junction hits onto the old Willow Street. Uh, it's a flat roof to add four metres to the depth of the garage and create a store. It doesn't appear to affect anyone. Because next door have got an, uh, an extension on theirs, which is higher again. So this one's below that. Uh, and it's in keeping with everything around it. So I, I don't see any grounds for objection there.
The proposal is that we don't object. Anybody got any comments, observations or disagree? Okay, thank you.
Uh, the next one, 0115. Uh, this is literally turning a garage into a house. It's the very last building on the right-hand side as you're leaving, uh, Cangotten on the A5, uh, with the steps coming down from the top. So they want to put a parking space on Birch Hill, which involves moving a telegraph pole and the post box, which is built into the wall at the moment. And then down below, they're just redoing the garage in the same shape. They're not adding anything to it apart from a little wall in the front and a screen to the side. Um, the two objections that, that have been put in from the Welsh government, that's because they haven't got a traffic management plan, uh, and traffic lights arranged, that sort of thing. And the NRW, uh, objecting because there's no foul drainage on the plan themselves. So they're material issues really. Again, there's no change in the appearance of it. So I don't think we can object to anything there.
Anybody got any observations, comments? Uh, councillor Haddie?
It's going to be rather heroic getting your car in and out of there, I would suggest.
On Birch Hill? No, because Birch Hill, it's, it's on the Birch Hill. Uh, they're going to put a little fence above it. But, yeah, when I pass there, you can never see the phone box, can you? Because there's always a car park there anyway. Now, I can see what you're saying, yes.
Uh, the proposal is that we don't object. Does anybody disagree with that? Okay, thank you.
Great. Uh, 1071, upper Penguin there.
I need to, I think I need to declare an interest here because I'm on, uh, part of the sort of board on that. Um, not the one that Shem's on, but, um, so I think I'd just declare an interest in that.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, go on, sorry.
That's it. So this is taking down four garages and putting three containers there, two like normal sized containers and a smaller one, uh, and then building a community garden. There have been some concerns from one of the neighbours there about the noise that it will create and privacy issues. When you look at the containers, they're 400mm higher. I can't see that on the screen, can you? Pointless to be doing that. But they're 400mm higher than the two metre garages at the moment. But when the fence goes in, that is 200mm, um, shorter than the garages. So there could be an issue there with privacy. But, um, do we, do we get involved with that? Is that part of our remit?
I know, I, um, uh, at, at, uh, um, a conversation I had, uh, this week, um, with regards to, um, the neighbour, she contacted me directly as Chair of Penguin, uh, uh, to, to ask my advice. Um, a couple of people have been out and have spoken to her, uh, and given her an assurance that, uh, the work that they do will, uh, uh, take full regard of their privacy and stuff. It's a bit, just, just to kind of those, those, um, councillors who, who are unaware of what they are, because the, the description of containers is a little deceptive really, because what it's going to do is introduce three further community rooms to the community centre, um, uh, with, with a, a kind of flexible space that can be converted from, uh, being a workshop for, um, uh, a kind of share and repair type shop to, um, something with tables and chairs for a tea dance. So, you know, the description of containers, uh, doesn't do it justice. At least I hope so, because otherwise I'm going to look rather foolish when there are, yeah, a set of containers stacked up there with no use they've put to them. So, anyway, thank you. So the, yeah, councillor Palmer?
Uh, yes, I, I, the lady, the lady in question is the only, she, she's actually next to where the garages are. She, she, uh, she spoke to me about it because she, as, as you said, she's concerned about noise and previous, privacy issues and she's the only person that's attached to it. Uh, she wasn't opposed to the community action. She was just very concerned because of her, uh, she lives there with, and, and her, her mother, she looks after. So I can understand it, but, um, I, I pointed her to, to object, if she wanted to, to the planning committee. But she's not a, she's not just being awkward at all. She, 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 she's very supportive of the community.
So the, the proposal is that we don't object. Has anybody got any further comments? Anybody disagree with that? Okay, thank you.
That concludes it.
Thank you very much. Uh, certificates of decision. Uh, uh, we need to note those again. Uh, correspondence, Gareth?
Uh, we've had no substantive correspondence, uh, unless, apart from what I've already forwarded to yourself.
Yeah, okay.
Specific and those breaking chain.
Reports to town council, um, uh, outside bodies, AOMB, pardon?
Youth representatives first, I don't know, Harvey's got to...
All right, okay. Uh, sorry, youth representatives and Mr Harvey. Sorry, anything you'd like to comment or?
No, I'm okay, thank you. I had a very fairly boring month. I'm trying to focus on exams at this point. So Melvin saw me trying to write a history essay in Riverbank this morning, but I got slightly attracted by all the plaque on the bridge, but I'm doing my best.
Yeah. Uh, right, thank you, Harvey. Uh, AOMB champion, who's that?
Councillor Mile.
Councillor Mile? Any, anything from the AOMB? Mel?
Um, I haven't, to be fair.
No, okay.
Well...
Uh, friends of Penguin, um, that's Bob, or I can, yeah, I mean, yeah, come on, Bob. You're muted, Bob.
Everything seems to be hunky-dory at the moment. Everything's starting to get more active and involved. And we've got this project that we're moving on with. Hopefully we'll be, uh, it'll add a great deal to the centre. So, yeah, um, fine.
Thank you. Friends of the Town Hall Group, don't think they've met, have they? Uh, John Matthews Trust? Anything to?
Um, AGM is in two weeks' time, so I'll have a report for the next council meeting.
Okay. When Gathlin Christmas Festival, guess that's me. We're, um, uh, well, hopefully, uh, hopefully we'll be, uh, back to, uh, a grand festival this Christmas. Um, we are going to have to have a massive campaign to look for support, uh, uh, because we've, we've, uh, lost some of our, our membership, yeah, either because they've retired from the group or we've lost them. Um, uh, and there's the, there are only few of us left. So we're hoping that we can encourage other people to join us. It would be a shame if it didn't happen because of lack of people to support it in the organisation, because it does bring a couple of thousand people into town on what would otherwise, I guess, be a fairly quiet, yeah, December Saturday. Um, so, yeah, we will be looking for, for volunteers and hopefully, uh, yes, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll be back to, yeah, a grand show. Councillor Palmer?
Uh, can I add to that? That I think it's a, a really good community event as well, as well as bringing businesses into town.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yes. Councillor Keddie?
I'll put myself forward to volunteer for you, Che.
Oh, thank you. That's brilliant. Thank you very much indeed. Excellent. I guess, I, a bit remiss of me not to mention the community group, John, where I'm guessing it's the, the money is what attracts people. Hopefully might attract some traders to join us to help us organise it. Silver Band?
Yeah, yeah. First of all, could I ask Gareth a question?
Yeah.
Are we going to have a good display on Castle Street this year and the lights?
Well, yes, we've, the Royal We of Asset Management have agreed that in the first instance, we're going to see if we can get our existing lights refurbished. Because obviously the suppliers of the temporary lights this year are the same ones that we purchased the, our lights off. They're still in stock. So if they can be refurbished at a reasonable price, we will go ahead with that. Failing that, we will then have to purchase new ones. We'll have to see how that pans out. So, yes, it's obviously a very temporary measure last year. Lots of problems, access getting them up. So we had a very limited number of lights up. But we managed to get some up. Possibly weren't as wide as I had hoped they'd be. No, so, yeah, as I said, that's the position. So because last year we'll have to pick up the ones that are on hire, they can take ours with them, check them out thoroughly, see if it's, you know, minor bits and bobs we added. It's probably cheaper than having to buy brand new ones. So, yeah.
Thank you. We've got the band, we've started back up again. We started up again last September. We had a reasonably good return of people and we're in the process of getting together a programme for entertainment. So if anybody wants to hire a band, there is one available in town. Excellent, thank you. Councillor Grindley's got a hand up.
Sorry, Che, yeah, councillor.
Councillor Grindley?
Sorry, I couldn't get your attention before going back to what you were talking about, the Christmas festival. One of the really big objectives from the Langothlin report is the town council to encourage the re-establishment of a representative and influential chamber of trade and tourism. I think that would be one of the main drivers for local businesses to work with the council and the council to work for them to promote events like the Christmas festival. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Langothlin Youth Trust?
That would be councillor Loveleppen, she not.
Okay. Langothlin Glen Terrian Welfare Charities?
It's yourself, isn't it, and councillor?
I, we've, we've not had a meeting. Councillor Grindley's got a hand up again?
No. No, I haven't got my hand up.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. Wavely Scales?
Councillor Baker.
Passed it free, Langothlin?
Councillor Loveleppen.
Yeah. Has got a Gwennent?
Councillor Teddy has our reference there.
Yeah. Has got a Gwennent, councillor Keddie?
Yes, that's the report.
Okay, thank you. Langothlin 2020? I'm guessing Melvin's kind of touched on that. It's gone.
I mean, as yet, there isn't an end date. But, you know, it's hoping to be done at the end of April. They're trying to, you know, there are bits to do on the, on the A5 junction, obviously, and the need to finish off the bridge and outside the bridge end. There's no panic as yet, apparently. Everything seems to be going okay. So fingers crossed.
Talking to them today, Mel, they, the guy we were talking to on the bridge when we were looking at damage, he said that they were still aiming to finish it before Easter. Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
But they might need to do some odd little bits afterwards.
Yeah, yeah.
Councillor Palmer?
Yes, I'm, I'm actually the representative on Destination Partnership. It doesn't figure on here.
Hang on, John, have we finished with 2020? Yeah?
Perhaps finishing off the bridge wasn't a very good term to use.
Anybody, any more about 2020? No. We've missed, it's missed off. And it's missed off. Just add on to the end, because it's the most appropriate place. The Jubilee Group? I don't know whether you'd like to say anything about it, Sheena? Is Sheena still with us? Yeah?
I am still with you. A bit croaky, but I am still here. Just let you know that things are moving along. We've got until the beginning of June. We've had a meeting and it was a very good meeting where ideas were put forward. And we're now putting the sort of meat on to the bones. So when we get together again, which unfortunately won't be till at least the end of next week, you know, we can start filling it in. It's amazing the number of people that I've spoken to who really want to get involved and want to do something for the Jubilee, which is lovely. Again, a great community. You just need to say in Langothlin, does anyone want to get involved? And you're practically beating them off with a stick, which is wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, just to, just to give a taste of what we're doing, I guess. We're planning an event not dissimilar to the Christmas festival, where we use Market Street and have some stalls, charity stalls and et cetera. Gareth is looking at the street closure. And Shay, Shay's not here, but apparently Shay's dad is qualified to do road closures and the risk assessment. He was going to look into that. So it is, it is kind of moving forward. And hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a bit more meat on the bones. Because of course, we're going to have to pass this over to the next council, because it's a council event, yeah. So I'm guessing it'll be initially some partnership working. Yeah, anyway, thank you for that. Anything else? Councillor Palmer?
I just said, I'm on the Destination Partnership presentative. I forwarded the minutes of the last meeting to Gareth, so I don't know if you can make them available, Gareth, rather than me go through it.
Yeah.
I'm also the representative on the, it's called the Langothlin Parks Community Group. And they're forging ahead, chasing grants for, for, for the parks. They're involved in Penguin, trying to get a grant there. And it's being driven by Jess Evans, who's doing a superb job. The amount of work she's putting into it is phenomenal.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any councillors got any other comments? Anything they want to say? Okay, thank you. I believe that's the end of the first part of the meeting. We're now going to have to move into section B. Shall we give ourselves a couple of minutes just to, yeah, allow for people to leave the meeting?
You have formally resolved, first of all, to move into part B.
All right, okay. I propose that we now move to part B. Anybody like to second me in that? Thank you, councillor Mile. Anybody object? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So if members of the public don't mind, if you could now leave the meeting, if not, I will remove you and we will stop recording.